We're going to start off, it's June 27th. It looks like 5:00 PM on the dot. We're going to have a whole agenda meeting. First of all, I'd like to call the meetings are ordered. And then I would like to announce our new library aide had a wise har. Sorry if I...
No, you got it.
All right. Do you mind stepping up to the podium for just a minute? I think we would all just like to say welcome and thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn on the microphone, please.
Okay. She doesn't have it.
You, we're not going to make a speech. No speech.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice speech.
Thank you for being here.
All right, next, I'm going to look for a motion closing the meeting pursuant to Minnesota statutes. Or before I close the meeting, before the motion for closing the meeting, I need to announce that the property being discussed is identified as parcel ID numbers And before the meeting is closed, I will also announce that the council, with the request for proposals reviewed, will not be discussed in this closed meeting. Next, I'll look for a motion closing the meeting pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 13D dot 05 subdivision 3C 3. Meetings having data classified as not public for the purpose of discussing and offer or offers for the purchase of real property. I'll look at that motion.
Still...
Could I get a roll call on that, please, Patty?
Woodruff?
Yes.
Clauser?
Yes.
Redwell?
Yes.
Swanson? Passy? Erickson? Reddins?
Yes. A few moments later. I'm going to run me out of motion to adjourn the closed session. But I should take another motion to adjourn the closed session and reconvene the committee in the whole agenda meeting.
Go.
Second.
Okay, good idea. Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Clauser?
Yes.
Redwell?
Yes.
Reddins?
Yes. All right. In this portion of the meeting, I do not see any appearances. We'll move on to administrator updates. Administrator has some car problems earlier, so he couldn't make it up here for today's meeting. Did you have anything? No? Okay. Attorney updates.
All you guys know is a lawsuit was dismissed by Judge Pearson in Duluth. There's 45 days to file an appeal, and he settled case. I have not received any proof, so I don't know where we're at. But the recall process moves along regardless until they file an appeal. And if they did, I would assume we have Supreme Court action quickly. But I know nothing other than that.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. City clerk and HR updates.
So Chair, I have several things I just want to review with you. First of all, consent agenda item number 16, the special event permit for the Minnesota Twins baseball softball clinic. Received authorization from Mr. Repi, the city's rec director granting his approval for use of the field that day. Staff is recommending approval of his permit. So when we get to that part, I just wanted you guys to know that we did have approval from the baseball, the baseball going forward. Second consent agenda item number 17 regarding the party in the park event. The company that's hired to put on this event, this is one that used to be called the mayor's kids' party, is now, it's been called the party in the park for the last few years. They called and just asked if we wanted to continue that event. And staff is recommending that we do, so that's a budgeted item. So I don't see that reason why we couldn't move forward with that. Number three, new business number two. We received a special event permit application from Loving Lake County and Twin Ports Entertainment for the Shenandoah Concert on August 20th. The time period requested is from 6:00 until 10:00 PM. They intend to have liquor sales. And that, those, that application will be processed separately from the event permit. This event order requires street and alley closures, which have been approved by the Public Works Director. And the police chief has also given his approval. The parking lot is owned by Lake County, and they have sent me written approval for the use of their site. The special event permit requires that the event from order requires signatures from 75% of the affected or adjoining property owners. And I heard from Michelle today from Loving Lake County that they have acquired those, those signatures. So if it's the desire of the council to approve the permit, we could do so. Pending receipt of those signatures, I mean, I'm sure we'll get a copy of that. As well as we need to get a certificate of insurance that names the city. So my recommendation would be that we approve the permit with the conditions related to it. Because another thing is that the historical society, because they use that parking lot for their business during the day, they just requested that it be open until like 4 o'clock on Saturday so that they can still have parking for their customers before the concert begins. And so, and then part of their sidewalk, they just want it not roped off until 4 o'clock that evening. And so there wasn't a problem with that on the end of what I'm recalling. So my recommendation would be that we approve it with the conditions related to the historical society and the licensing permit. The next thing is authorizing a grant agreement with Loving Lake County for funding assistance for the Festival of Sales. This would be pending approval of the city attorney if the city desires, decides to move forward with the funding plan. So just so we are, have approval of that, should we need it moving forward. Just kind of a authorization for us to move forward with that contract. And next, we had a request by our community development planner to add to new business, a request authorized Bolton Mink to prepare preliminary design concept for two tunnels to be used by snowmobiles and ATVs with one at each end of the highway to cross Highway 61. And I'll let her address that issue when it's her turn. Does anybody have any other questions regarding items on the agenda?
What number was that item, that last one you just?
It would be the under new business, the next number, whatever that is. Four.
Can you read that back to me one more time?
Approving a request to authorize Bolton Mink to prepare preliminary design concept for two tunnels to be used by snowmobiles and ATVs with one at each end of town to cross Highway 61.
Okay. That is right here. Okay. Gotcha. Thank you. Finance director updates.
Thank you, Council President. I guess the main topic, and I, I did miss this at the last council meeting because I was out, but on the tall ships. So I guess we can have that conversation. I did send out a memo late Friday, you know, just with some updated numbers and some funding options. And I do have a copy of that memo if anybody wants it. But I just want to start with if anybody had any questions for me at this time. And otherwise, I can kind of go over some of those numbers and how they came about and where we got them from.
Sure.
Okay, so I believe, you know, in this memo and the memo from previous meeting, we had discussed the largest expense being public safety. And, you know, we always knew that outside law enforcement was going to be by far the biggest expense that we had. We have nine police officers. And two of those are including Chief Hogenson and Assistant Police Chief Ken Anderson. And then that leaves us with seven officers for the city. So then we go on to outside law, outside law enforcement. This number has fluctuated over the course of the seven months since we knew of tall ships. The initial numbers were really just a stab in the dark. We had, you know, no, you know, I think I listened to the last meeting and maybe, you know, like we had presented 50,000 or 70,000. And I don't think we really had, you know, we're just saying it could be up to this dollar amount. And if I'm wrong, Rick, you know. But, you know, and then as Rick and Ken have been working on this and honing in on that, you know, we thought, okay, we'll do 24 officers is what Chief Hogenson thought he needed after meeting, you know, with Samborski. And realizing though that, you know, we're, we're way off as far as that gap of what we expect Samborski to pay and what the city was going to pay. And, you know, so we went back to Rick and said, can you look at your numbers and see what you can do? And he came back with 19. So he got rid of five additional officers for, for public safety for Two Harbors. Then, and Rick knows more, you know, about this, but he attended a tabletop meeting for safety for the tall ships event last Wednesday, I believe it was. You know, and listening to, going over that event, he really came back and said, I, I need 22 officers. So we added three more officers. So when you look at my numbers, you know, the last time I had 94, or 89,400, and I came back with 94,500. So we had added three additional officers. And I do want to disclose that a lot of these agencies, you know, we were estimating what number we needed, but we did not have any idea of what those costs looked like. You know, what they were going to be requesting costs from us. We received it from one agency, which we knew was probably on the high side. So we did an average. And that's where we were, like, how we placed those 22 officers. Knowing that that was going to be high, but to us, being more on the conservative side was better than saying, oh, it's going to be 25, but now we're at 75, sorry. So as we honed in and have received even since, you know, between the June 13th meeting and today, we have received most numbers from the agencies that we're going to be drawing from. There's still a couple that are variables out there. And so that number, the 94,500 with those 22 officers, and that's including, like, detection dogs and canine units. And so I, we feel pretty comfortable with that number after going over that for quite a bit. And especially all the time and effort that Ken and Rick have really put into developing this plan. And then, of course, we do have communication and emergency management at $10,000. And that comes from St. Louis County. We do have miscellaneous at about $9,600. You know, give and take, that is really, we do have to provide food and water and different resources for all these outside agencies that are coming over that 40-day period. And tents and a lot of safety equipment, bandages, and extra tasers, cartridges. Then Public Works, we, the Public Works personnel, 11,200. That's assuming that there's seven Public Works people attending this event and helping during the 40-day period. And then roll closures and signs is only an estimate. But as those figures come in and we start ordering things, we will have a better definition of what that looks like. Is there any questions up to this point?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
You made mention that the communications and emergency management was coming from St. Louis County. I just have certification on why that's coming from St. Louis County, not Redwell.
I'm not sorry doing this.
I think I can answer your question. We have one emergency manager, and we have a limited amount of dispatchers that are here to serve all of Lake County, which is about 10,570 people.
Can I get you the turn in my phone?
So, sorry about that.
No problem.
Just outside resources are needed. The amount of people coming to our community, the limited resources that Lake County Sheriff's Office also has, who does dispatching for the Two Harbors Police Department, these folks are needed to come here. They have one dispatcher, one Jalen working typically most times to take care of this event would be nearly impossible and would flood their communication center. So those folks are needed to help plan and take care of all that we're doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Did you have anything else?
Well, I just wanted to go over the funding as well. And I, just before this meeting, and I see Janelle Jones is here. And we had received a letter from her regarding their support for the tall ships from Loving Lake County. So with, you know, it looks like we're going to get up to $50,000 with, from Loving Lake County for this event. And that'll be on a reimbursement basis. And of course, you know, as being as transparent as we can with all of these costs, you know, they will be coded in a different area for us to easily track and know. And we wouldn't expect anything different for that. So just really appreciative for the support from Loving Lake County for that. And then we, there's a match required of $50,000 from the city. You know, and I think, I know that we definitely do not want the taxpayers, taxpayers to be burdened by this. And the recommendation would be, you know, with the least amount of effect, to be from the campground as those come from the campers that revenue. And so that would be the recommendation, I think, at our finance meeting. That's also what we talked about. And although I just want to point out that we do not have to decide or make any decisions as far as like where the money is going to come from, from the city. And we are continuing to still look at different avenues for different funding sources from outside agencies as well.
What would those outside agencies be, Miranda?
One was the Two Harbors Visitors Bureau. Then IRR. We're still communicating with them just to see if there was any programs that fit with our needs.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Have we looked with the county as well? I mean, this is an event that is going to obviously impact the entire county. So have we spoken with anyone, any of our county commissioners as far as if they would be willing to help with the costs?
Yeah, and I know that we had talked about that, that finance as well. And I have not reached out, you know, to anybody, but we can definitely do that certain tomorrow.
Any other questions, Miranda?
Any other questions?
So preview the numbers, I guess, is what I'm looking for. Is what's, you know, what's the total and then what's what we have so far? That's, I guess, more important to me.
Okay.
But I think we're looking at like $200,000, roughly?
You know, right now, we're at about 1,167. That was our most updated numbers. And I just, I really want to point out, you know, what we as staff and administration need from the city council is to say, yes, we're moving forward with tall ships. We're funding this. And knowing that myself and administration will do whatever they can to, you know, lessen those dollars that the city has to pay. But I feel like money coming from the campground, we are going, you know, there is, you know, we're going to see an economic impact to the community, for the businesses and everything. So there will be dollars coming in that's additional to, for this event. But... But I, I mean, you know, we're getting 15,000 from, from tall ships, the contribution. The Two Harbors Visitors Bureau, that, you know, that could be around $18,000. I don't, you know, we still have yet to talk to that committee to see if they would be willing to donate that money. And then Loving Lake County, 50,000, the city contribution, 50,000. Fender permits, possibly around $5,000. So that leaves a gap of 27,950.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I don't want to tell anyone how to do their job. But I'm looking at some of the things on the itemized list that I was given when I requested it. And I just feel like some things like taser cartridges and life jackets and rope throw bags that I know are out there on the break wall, that we don't need to have some of those things in there. But I do not want to presume we step on anyone's toes. I just feel like there's some things that we're asking for that we don't need to ask for. Bug dope and sunscreen and lip balm and Ziploc bags. I mean, those are things that, and some of those things should already be in the, in, in what they have.
Go ahead, Miles.
Wasn't, wasn't there something that could be negotiated to on that 42,000 still? I mean, now that this is the final cost, we're going to finance.
Oh, and I, I mean, you know, in this...
I mean, that's, that's the gap.
Well, right, and in here, I have Two Harbors PD, which are the additional costs for the event, and then Public Works. That is like an in-kind service. And depending upon the budget, which, you know, if the budget is low for this, there may be no effect in those additional costs for that. And there's some additional things in there that need to be decided. So, I mean, you're right, Miles, like, that could be where, you know, that there's that gap of the 27,950.
I think I'm going to call on our Chief of Police next. I would also like to say in part of that cost as well, part of the funding is from Mr. Samborski.
Right, um, yeah, right now it's 15,000.
Mr. Hogenson?
Sure. I guess I, I'll figure out a place to start here. I guess in response to Councilor Redwell's comments there, to not plan for rain, hot weather, those types of things would not be smart on our part. You sat in on the tabletop exercise for a little bit. And I believe that you saw how quickly the resources we had were depleted. I don't know what was going on in your group, but what we have is quickly depleted. I think to go to the level of lip balm, sunscreen, bug dope, those types of things, if you'd like, you can knock $500 off of the amount that we've requested. But I know it's, it's, we're trying to scratch pennies and trying to get it there. I get it, Councilor Redwell and the city council. I just, I can't be at that level. From the beginning, I've told everyone, we're trying to stay at 30,000 feet. These law enforcement officers who are going to come here to help take care of our community need to be taken care of. If we were to leave and go somewhere else to assist them, I promise you, we would be taken care of. Next, I know these cost estimates. Some of the city councils were surprised at them and had concerns over them. I would just like to point out that at the public safety meeting in December of 2021, we shared our initial estimates. Were they off? Yep. But like Finance Director Pietola said, we were throwing a dart at it. They were probably lower than we are now. But with any event, just like any project, as the estimates come in and we get wages and all of those things, that's what's driving these costs up. We had no idea how much, and EOD tech, so somebody who's trained with, for bombs, and a canine cost, we just got those numbers. In the finance committee, in January of 2022, we brought these estimates to the city council. And I have always said, there will be external costs with the festival as we, the Two Harbors Police Department, are not big enough to handle such an event. Our staffing levels, the necessary supplies and equipment that we have, our costs that we have continually looked at, Ken and I, we've had great discussions with Finance Director Pietola about those costs. We are still trying to staff about 156 hours of the hours that we believe are necessary to be staffed. So as this council talks about tall ships and we wait for an answer, other local law enforcement agencies and personnel are waiting to hear from Assistant Chief Anderson and myself. The people that the city of Two Harbors employs, our officers, have had their vacations, there's no vacation. They're wondering, what direction are we going? And I think we all know that we need a decision today. Parking and traffic have always been a concern of ours. I've stressed that multiple times. Mr. Samborski has said, traffic is a concern. He has people working on that and on parking. We need these officers to be here to take care. We also have a community to take care of. What we do on a day-to-day basis, because tall ships is here, does not go away. We still are responsible to the public. We have other visitors coming here who have no idea about tall ships. We have people in our community who don't know tall ships are coming. I don't know how, but that is what I've heard. I had an invitation, where I put out an invitation to meet and discuss details with each of you at the previous city council meeting. And I've spoken to no one. And I would just share that it's difficult for me to share. You kind of grimaced. I put out, and if people want to know the staffing plan and have those discussions, I would have that with you on an individual basis. Nobody reached out. But I just want to share that it's difficult to share staffing plans and job assignments with each of you at a public meeting because that could compromise the safety of the public and our officers. And I won't do that. I just ask that we trust that we have a plan in place that will make the tall ships festival one that is safe and successful. You've heard those words from me before, for everyone. Mindful, we still have an obligation and responsibility to the community we serve. We met with the finance committee. I think we had a very good meeting, had good discussion about all of that. And like Finance Director Pietola said, we did go back, look at our staffing plan. Went to the tabletop exercise and through discussions with many of the professionals from our area, homeless security, emergency management, folks from Duluth again, from all over the region, were super helpful. And I said I was reluctant to reduce it. That's why there's three more on there. We left that tabletop exercise, sat down with the people we felt appropriate, and came back, and that's where we landed. It was, we need three more people to be able to do this. So that's why the increase is there. I will answer any questions that you have. And I guess I'm just sharing with you, the elected officials of Two Harbors, that we need to have a safe and successful festival in and around the community. It takes supplies, equipment, and staffing. Failure to plan is planning to fail. And I'm not going to do that as the Chief of Police. So as we look at those things, whether it's food, water, hydration stuff, lip balm, bug dope, it's all part of a plan. And I would ask, Miranda's hard on me on the numbers. I'm hard on myself. But in situations like this, I understand those dollars are important, but I cannot compromise public safety side of things when it comes to this event.
I would stand for questions if there are any. Any questions?
No, thank you so much, Chief Hogenson. I appreciate your... Kendra?
Can I speak?
Sure.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. At the last meeting, I identified an $80,000 funding source in parking, which I said we could take care of for you. One of the other things that came out of the tabletop from our group is the state of Minnesota will provide two people to work the command center for free. And Red Cross will take care of all the meals for the event. So I think there was like 10 grand in there for catering. Red Cross has a program to feed public safety that will include breakfast lunch and dinner. So I don't know if you have any questions for me at all.
Anybody from the council have questions for Mr. Samborski? Go ahead, Miranda.
Well, I, I know that we discussed a possible funding source as far as, you know, putting permitted parking on the street, but I really think that that's probably not a brilliant idea because.
Those are chiefs' ideas, so.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, somebody's going to have a park.
Yeah, you, you came to the same meeting that I did with the same idea, Rick.
I came with a parking. I'll wait, I'll address the council.
That, that, that's okay. What I, what I want to say is, is that just taking a drive through any street in Two Harbors right now, you're lucky you can find four places on a street to park as opposed to what you're anticipating. So I don't know that getting parking permits for people coming to the event is, is really going to help the situation. And I don't know that that's really going to be, be a funding source for all of this. I think that, and I have to say this out loud because I really think that the sad part about this whole thing is that we got the information way too late and we started planning way too late. When you don't even know anything about a festival this size until October, the year before it's going to happen, with all of the planning that has gone into it up to this point, we had no way of knowing how much this was going to cost the City of Two Harbors. And, and when I say cost the City of Two Harbors, I mean, how are we going to keep the City of Two Harbors safe? Because the rest of whatever happens is on you guys. I'm only concerned about my community being safe during your event.
Right. So for the record, I met with your city representative last summer. And whatever you think about the mayor, is whatever you think about the mayor. I don't know him, I didn't know him then. When I come to the city, that's usually the first contact I make. I've got emails, I have texts saying, no cost for police, no cost for this, no cost for that. And then the council approved it. So I went forward in October. I started planning this in July. And why the mayor didn't speak to you about that, I don't know. I don't know the, the power structure here, but that's what happened. And so the council approved it and we moved forward. We put tickets on sales. We did contracts with ships. We paid for marketing and we keep coming back to things. And I am trying to help you find a solution. These events are extremely good for communities financially. Businesses in Duluth are unhappy that this event is not there. So I, I do not have all the answers, but we've been on this merry-go-round, I have for over a year, and I've been trying to be professional and not throw people under the bus. But I can only go on based what your city representative said to me. That's all I can do. And, you know, with regards to the parking, it was an option to throw out there one side of the street permitted non-resident parking for the weekend. We both talked about it. I'm not trying to throw the chief under the bus. It was a conversation we had. We both left that meeting feeling good about things. And, you know, I, I wish things were different. I'm spending a lot more time on this event than I've ever spent on one. And I've done 21 of these so far. But that's the reality. And there's, I have, I've been looking through all these emails and texts from the last year and, you know, that we're standing here having this conversation today is rather surprising to me. So there is, there is either going to be people parking on the street or not. You can manage or you cannot manage it. There's going to be people that will come in their car and do that. I think you can manage it and I think you can make money. 15 grand is what I've offered to pay for public safety, which is more than I paid in Los Angeles, Philadelphia and Duluth. And, you know, you can shake your heads at it, that Two Harbors is different, it's not. I've done 21 of these, it is not different. It is not, the parking is the same, traffic's the same, public safety needs are the same. And there are other, there's a lot of resources out there that we could be talking to, that Rick could be talking to that have done this event before. So again, I'm sorry that we're here. I have an obligation to put on a great, safe festival. The public safety numbers that you're seeing are everything outside of the gate. I'm paying for everything that's within side of those, those gates, plus an additional 15 grand outside the gate.
Somebody, have any more questions?
I just want to, in my, my timeline, we had a letter of support before we knew it. I think, I think tickets were going on sale. And then they're supposed to be, the festivals, there's supposed to be somebody directing it, and then that changed. Then we were supposed to meet with you guys, and we didn't meet till, I believe, February or March. So like, I mean, the, the city has been put on an extreme time crunch. I'd like to see it happen, it's just, I don't think we really got the foresight. We never got numbers until late in the game. You know, if they would have been right up front, if somebody would have came and said it's going to cost you $190,000, I think we could have better prepared for it because we're trying to scramble for the dollars towards the end.
I can just tell you historically, though, it doesn't cost that. I mean, I, I'm not going to argue with the chief for your as a budget, but I, I have the numbers from all the other markets.
It's, I just, it was a lot for the city, in my opinion, in a short period of time. It's, it's been messy, in my opinion. But like you said, if you've been dealing with this for a year, I think it's the way it was presented to us. And I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers, like, I don't think the whole council was aware of exactly what was going on the whole time either. So, yeah, that's, we're, we're trying to do our best just to make the event happen too. And I, I support the chief and them, and I believe their costs are what they, we've, we've been meeting all year too and took a lot of time just of our own to do this. City time, their time, that's, that's not reimbursed either for the last six months. So I just want everyone to be aware of that too. We're trying to make it happen. I was saying, it wasn't presented very cleanly to us, that's all.
I, I, I completely get that. I, I, I sat here many times last fall going, how come nobody's in touch? And, you know, I, and I'm, I, I will get, I get texts daily and emails daily from the mayor. Everything's going great up here, it's going fine. And I, you want, this is not normal when I do this event. The communication is not like the way it is. But I'm not from Two Harbors, I don't know any of you really. And when you're dealing with the mayor of a city, you think you're plugged into the city. You know, that's, that's my reality. So.
I, I guess if the council or, or anyone asked questions about the parking, never, that was a meeting, I'll just explain this. We brought a parking plan to a meeting that allowed for parking on the south side of all of our streets. In that meeting, Mr. Samorski, he's a outside-the-box thinker, came up with the idea. Asked me to set up a meeting with the administrator and Miranda. And I believe that happened within the next day or two. We were all meeting, talking about this issue. Just to be clear, never did I have the idea to sell parking places. I've always had the concern of how do we monitor that? Do we have enough to do without looking for tags in windows of cars? Thank you.
Rick, do you have anything else to add?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Community development planner updates.
Good evening, council. Tonight on the agenda, I have number 14. It's authorizing the mayor perk to execute and deliver a grant agreement between the City of Two Harbors and the Two Harbors Area Fund for an extension of the grant deadline from December 31st to November 1st of 2023. So this is a project, the Odegaard Jail project, that we were going to partner with the county on. And the county has decided to push their Eighth Street project out until next year. And they didn't have the plans ready and it's not a good time to bid. So we went through with Jason and pulled some numbers, and it's just not feasible for us to do it this year. So we're going to wait until next year with the county so we can get the best pricing and maximize our grant dollars. And until then, I had to ask for an extension for the grant because we were supposed to have this project completed by the end of 2020. And they have agreed, so they gave us until next year. So that's what that's all about. And then the second thing, I hate to stand up here and ask for money after that conversation, however. So Trees and Trails has been working on the 2025 MINDOT Highway 61 project. And we've been working with the ATV club, the snowmobile club, the DNR and the Regional Trails Task Force. And for a long time, getting ATV and snowmobile traffic across 61 and from the west end to the east end of town has been a problem, it's been a safety issue. And so the thought was always there to put in two tunnels, one at the west end and one at the east end, that would allow those ATVs and snowmobiles to go through. We're at that point in the project where MINDOT is doing the final plans and within 30 days, we need to know if we are going to potentially do this project. In order to know if we're going to do that, we have to have some preliminary design done. And Bolton and Mink will do that. But I need council authorization for that to happen. It doesn't mean you're committing to the tunnels. We know that the tunnels are going to be a big expense. We know that probably for both of them, we're looking at five to six million dollars. And we know the city doesn't have that money. The intention is for that entire 2025 project to bond. That has always been the intention, and so this is just something we're looking into. We're going to save money if we do this upfront and we piggyback onto the state's NEPA, the environmental testing that they're going to do. If you're going to do the tunnels, this is the time to do it. While that highway is torn up and we have partnership with MINDOT. We have regional partners that want to get involved in this as well. So the city won't, you know, we don't have any cost estimates at this time. But this is the first step, is we need Bolton and Mink to do those preliminary designs. Once those come back, if the council chooses to not go forward with it, we don't have to. But we need to get those done in case we do want to do that. And it's not my decision, it's not Joe's decision, it's the council's decision. I would recommend it.
Mr. Chair, I just had a question. I don't know if it is five or six million, I can tell you right now, I wouldn't even want to do the preliminary study because I just know I don't have it, unless there's outside funding sources, I mean, that's.
Well, I just said that we would go out for bonding for the 20, I believe we're going to have to do some bonding for the 2025 project. The county has already put aside a million dollars for this project and I think we have $100,000 put away for the lights. So I'm assuming we are going to have to do some bonding.
I just, that's a couple of years, that, this is my personal opinion on, I mean, I'm all for them, but now with that price tag on them, I'd love to see them, but that's, that's what we spend each year, you know, just for two tunnels.
The Highway 61 project is going to be lasting for many, many, many years to come. So it's not something temporary.
I'm just saying it's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. It's a lot of money, but I feel like it's well worth it. And if we're going to bond and if you don't get the money, you don't go ahead with them. But you don't know if you're going to get it until we have these preliminary designs in place. And if we don't do it and somewhere down the road, the city decides to do it, then you're going to be responsible for all the environmental testing and everything else that goes with it that the state is picking up the tab on right now. And Miles, I know it's three years out, however, MINDOT is finalizing the project, the designs, by the end of August. So we have 30 days to get this done. We just found this out this morning. We've known for a while that we needed this, but we thought we had more time than the 30 days. Joe says he can get it done.
How much is the preliminary engineering cost?
We don't know yet, but we're thinking it's going to be an amount not to exceed $50,000. Joe's going to try to do whatever he can to keep that closer to 30.
Could that potentially be tracked separately then on a different project versus, or how do you work that usually, Joe? I know we track certain expenses from Bolton and Mink separately.
Yeah, I agree with you, council. Mr. President, we have a project already established for all of our classrooms in MINDOT, from Highway 61 project. And in that project, we can establish separate tasks. So if you authorize us to do this preliminary design of the underpasses, I would create a task to track all the hours we spent on that activity. So it would be discreetly identified on the invoices, God, that Miranda gives. And I just want to clarify, the final design is, is not happening now. MINDOT needs to finalize their anticipated footprint of the project for the environmental documentation. Final design's still got some tweaking to do yet, but they did say that if we want to include these underpasses, they're fine with that, but they put the burden on us because they're not going to participate financially. But they're willing to let us, you know, ride their coattails and piggyback into their project with it. But to do that, we can't slow down their schedule. And they said, you need to have your footprint identified within roughly the next three days. So I said, what's with the timeframe? We're talking, you know, I, I thought they had originally said October. I said, well, we have like 90 days, 60 days? And he goes, oh, no, no, more like 30 days. He said, so you, we would need the footprint identified so that they can then include it in the documentation they submit for their environmental review. So that's why this came up today and guessing that, you know, a couple of culverts, it could be, or underpasses, it could be five million, 1% for preliminary engineering. That's how we came up with quickly for tonight's meeting, you know, and not to exceed $50,000 for the engineering there, to locate these and identify their footprints.
And just so the council is aware, this is not just a city group that came up with this. This is a whole regional group of people. And that regional trap, the Regional Trails Task Force has identified dollars that they are going to contribute. They're looking at putting up a trailhead somewhere, they, they're thinking somewhere on the west end. So they are very active in this and they are contributing to all of this as well.
I hate to cut you guys off, but it is 6:02, so thank you, guys. Go ahead, Robert.
Can I ask then, that if this item is going to be added to the, the six o'clock agenda, that we authorize it, but not to exceed $50,000 to be added to the language?
Thank you, council, I'd love to back that way.
And what number was that again?
It's number four, which is an.
Oh, that's the one, that's the one, you're looking at the number four. Okay.
But I would just make sure that we have not to exceed $50,000. I would hope that we could do it for less, but I'll go with 50.
At this time, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Someone will second.
Joe Paul, please.
Putra?
Yes.
Clasher?
Yes.
Redwall?
Yes.
Red.
Yes, we are adjourned.